We need Jim and Molly.
Got Jim.
Oh, there's Jim, sorry.
Karen, we do need to make sure that everybody turns off their microphones when they get done speaking because this room is so small.
Okay.
We'll have oral feedback, okay? Go through that.
That's the registry.
Okay, we'll call to order this meeting of the city council, February 17, 2015. This is a committee of the whole meeting. Would staff call the roll, please?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Councilmember Philseth.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Council, Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wolbach. Councilmember Scharf. Seven present.
And we know that Councilmember Wolbach will be a little bit late and will be joining us in progress.
Question of process. This is a meeting of the whole. What, are there rules or procedures that are different?
There really aren't any procedures that are different. It's a little more informal, but basic, basic meeting parameters still hold. So, I see no cards for anyone to speak under oral communications. So, we will go then to action item number one, which has four parts to it, and these are things that were carried over from the retreat discussion topics. So, under 1A, which is procedures and protocols, have one member of the public, Roger Smith, would you like to speak? You have three minutes.
Thank you. This right here?
That would be great.
Voters want you all to be more effective, and I think that's one of the reasons Measure D, reducing the council size from nine to seven, was passed. Many people said to me, "Why not five members?" A senior staff person told me they had worked in several government agencies, and Palo Alto was the only council that thought they should comment on each item. So, I suggest that we move to a vote. Limit the public to two minutes. Much can be said in that time. Most citizens do not come to council, but many of us, Bob, Herb, Theresa, are here a lot. We can get our ideas across in two minutes. Agenda items where there will be public comments should come first on the agenda. Each agenda item should have a time limit. If it's not met, it goes to the end of the agenda. Tom and Eric, you have been in many corporate board meetings, and please bring your expertise to the council. Finally, a board of directors, like a city council, gives guidance. Trust your staff to run the city and hold their feet to the fire. And do not hire so many consultants. The voters are sick of that waste of time and money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roger. And we also have Herb Borak would like to speak to this item. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Holman. The city council's not a board of directors. It's an elected body that represents different political views in the city, and it can't delegate to the city manager how to balance those political views. That's the job of the city council. In the past, city councils were able to meet, have four regular meetings every month and didn't complain about it. In the past, city councils met at 7:30 PM and didn't need to have free dinners before every meeting. In the past, the city council, rather than the city manager, referred items to the city council committees, and therefore, the city manager could not unilaterally remove something from a city council committee agenda. In the past, all planning items had public hearings. They were not consent calendar items that required multiple numbers of councils to remove them. In the past, all committee reports were agenda items. They were not consent calendar items. In the past, only one vote was required, one council member, to remove an item from the consent calendar. During the past 15 years, there has been significant change in the council's agenda order and its procedures relating to that, and they've generally favored and facilitated the overdevelopment that we've had in the past 15 years. In the past, the procedures and protocols and agenda order that we had balanced the interests of those who were in the business of making money off of development and those who were residents and were neither in the business of making money off of development and didn't represent the largest corporations in the city. They were here as residents. That's what's been broken in the city. It's unusual when there's a balance between those two. When we had that balance between residents and developers, I thought we had a better city and we had council members who didn't feel that, you know, that there had to be an app for participating in meetings. I mean, if someone gets elected to the council, why do they have to go to meetings? Can't they just phone it in? Or it must be some computer application where they can do it. So, I tried to find, in the short time I had before this meeting was announced, since this meeting's been announced, to provide you with prior agenda order description. This was set, I guess, at the start of a city, essentially four-day holiday weekend. So, I do have the one as of 1989 when the agenda order was in the municipal code. Sometime in 1990, it was removed outside of the code into separate procedures. At this time, the meeting started at 7:30, and oral communications had already been reduced to three minutes from five minutes because three citizens kept coming to oral communications for their own items because the council never put it on the agenda. They've since died, but it's still three minutes. And at this time, it was five minutes that public spoke on agenda items. So, I'll provide this for the clerk to pass out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Herb.
So, with that, a couple of us at least have submitted suggestions for procedures and protocols consideration by Policy and Services. At this point in time, these are all going to go to Policy and Services, the procedure and protocols, that is. So, if anybody else has anything that they want to submit or mention, then this is the time to do that. We have a very full agenda and very likely not going to be able to accomplish all of that. We had scheduled this meeting originally to end at seven because of another meeting. I'm hoping that this evening, we can stay over just a little bit to accommodate, hopefully facilitating some conclusion on some of this. Also, I know City Attorney has something to bring forward under procedures and protocols for council awareness.
May I say something, Madam Mayor? Just to get everybody on the same page, the materials that you have have a summation from your last retreat of meeting management, policies and procedures, et cetera, which for the most part were issues that individual council members surfaced at that retreat. We got, to our knowledge, we received supplemental information in just in advance of this meeting from Council, from Vice Mayor Schmidt and from Mayor Holman. Is there any others that you got additionally?
I have.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. So, City Attorney, do you want to lead off with your concern? And, well, yes, go ahead.
Sure. So, thank you, Mayor Holman, Councilmembers, Molly Stump, City Attorney. I did want to highlight for the council and perhaps have a little bit of discussion or refer to the committee or another committee meeting of the whole, issues that are raised by something that we're seeing this year, perhaps to a greater degree than in the past, and that several council members have raised with me, which is what happens when council members wish to bring forward data analysis, research that hasn't been prepared and presented as part of the staff report? So, Councilmember, Mayor Holman, did you want me to just briefly?
Yes, please. Okay. Introduce the matter.
The matter, okay. So, we have seen some of this, and I know there's some interest on the council. I want to highlight a couple of issues that can be raised by that and perhaps get a larger conversation started. This issue can have legal implications as well as policy and operational considerations that I think the council needs to be aware of and perhaps have a conversation and possibly have some additional guidelines and practices around the bringing forward of additional data and items adding to the record. So, the issue that concerns me the most as your City Attorney is the potential for a legal issue to be, to be implicated in a quasi-judicial type of matter. Now, council members usually are sitting as a legislative body, making policy, and you have broader discretion when you're sitting as a policymaking body. But from time to time, you sit as a quasi-judge, and you're making a decision about a particular item that's being brought forward that needs, existing laws need to be applied to it. So, rather than making new rule going forward prospectively, you're applying existing rules to a project or an application. And in that situation, there are constitutional principles of due process that apply, and there are various elements of those. But one of them is that the parties that come before the council have a right to be heard, and they have a right to have the decision based on the record that's before the council. So, when new items are being added to that, we have to make sure that that's being done in a way that honors those due process rights. We can talk about various ways that that might be done. Partly, it's going to be a question of timing. And then also, I think we should think about whether there should be some additional disclosures, elements of disclosures that are made when a due process item is called. Currently, our procedures talk about disclosing contacts with outside individuals, which is, I think, traditionally the way that this issue comes up for councils. But exactly the same legal principles are implicated by additional data, research, analysis that's, that's done by a council member and brought into the meeting. So, I think we, we need to think about making those disclosures broader.
And I believe you said, "Making the disclosures broader, but also bringing the information forward sooner."
Yes. If, if new information is added to the record the night of the decision, there are a lot of implications. Certainly, there are implications for the rest of council members in terms of your ability to absorb and apply it. But legally, the, the key implication is that the parties are hearing it for the first time, and they have a right to be able to understand that the decision may in part be based on that information, which means they need some time to be able to understand the information, absorb it, and respond to it, and give you contextual information, explain why, in their view, it may not be relevant to, or there may be other information that's, you know, equally relevant, or whatever it is that they want to, to argue. And so, if, if new information is added at a meeting, just the same way as if a party added new substantive information, we really have to be looking at rescheduling your final decision to another night to give everybody a chance to understand the information and respond to it. So, one way to deal with that might be to have that information come into the process earlier so that you can still hear the item and resolve it that night, and it won't impact your already crowded calendars as much. Yeah, thank you.
So, currently, this is scheduled to go to, I should say scheduled, this is intended to go to Policy and Services, as we talked about at the retreat. One additional thing that you suggested, I believe, earlier was to provide broader clarification for the whole council on this, because there are only four people on Policy and Services Committee, is that you could write a summary of the potentialities, risks and opportunities, and that sort of thing. And so, the whole council would have access to that on an earlier basis.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Holman. I think actually, I would like to do a little primer for the council on the whole issue of due process. Who has due process rights and what are the key elements, and how are those honored in the process? This is the kind of thing that often council members get training on this, and we've really been remiss because of our, all of our pressing schedules and not focusing on it. So, it really is a broader topic, and I'm not, I don't mean to suggest that there are any unaddressed problems in this area, but it is a, an important duty that you have, and it's really quite different than when you're sitting as a policymaking body. So, I think I will take the time to put together some, hopefully, user-friendly written materials and get them to you that way.
Let the record show that Councilmember Wolbach has joined us, and thank you. And this is not a way to say, "Oh gee, we shouldn't have done that." It's a way of saying, "Here are some potholes. We want to avoid these potholes as we repair our streets." So, does anyone have any particular, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Schmidt?
Yeah, a question. You mentioned new data. I assume you're not talking about reinterpretation of old data or bringing forth data that might have been presented in a different context, but you're talking about brand-new data that hasn't been publicized in a council package agenda in the history of the council?
So, in the context of a due process matter, it is really narrower than that. It's what is in the record before the council on that item. So, if you are finding some relevant data in some work that you did the previous year and you want to rely on that, that needs to come into the record of the item before the council in a due process matter. So, that, that can be an issue.
So, you're saying we can't talk about anything that the staff hasn't presented? That, that seems very, very constraining.
It's not, it's not what you can talk about. It's what you can base your decision on. And the parties are entitled to know all of the information that the council is considering when it's making its decision. So, again, this is very different than sitting as a policymaking body, where you're making a rule or establishing a service or program that's going to apply prospectively. This is an existing, you're, you're taking existing laws and you're applying them to a particular application or project that's before you. Often, when we do that, if we decide that there is a problem and we don't, we, we think that there is a negative policy implication to our existing rules, we, it comes out through this process. And the council can say, as was done with parking maybe a year and a half ago, "Oh, this is how our rules work. Well, we need to look at changing our rules." And that process was initiated with the staff. And, but that's a legislative process that started separately. You can't take the existing project and say, "Well, we have a concern about how the rules apply, and so, we're going to change the rules for this project." That's what the law doesn't allow. So, that applicant has entitlement to know what the rules are and what information the council will consider. So, if you think there is information that you need to consider that's not a part of the record, there certainly is an ability to bring it in, but everyone has to know that that's happening and have time to absorb it and respond to it.
I guess the advantage of the 10-day early packet allows council members to raise this publicly. Now, can they say, "Oh, here's other information from Report A, Report B, Report C," which is relevant? And by mentioning that, does it make it part of the public record?
So, I think that that's a good point, that the early packet release does give an opportunity to keep items on the agenda but add to that record. We should talk about that, though, about how that can be done. It certainly has implications for the staff that's working to support the item. So, I think that's a longer conversation.
Okay. Quick, quick question. So, if I understand what you're saying, then it's really critical because it's part of the record that, that our commissions and boards understand this as well, because that is creating the record. And so, if, for some reason, our planning commission fails to question a certain issue, then it's missing from the record when it comes to us. Is that correct?
If, if you think that an issue is important and it hasn't been fleshed out by the commission, then it can be added at the council level. But you're quite right, that you, you want your commissions to do a good job of vetting the issues and putting everything together. It's not just the commission, it's also the staff. So, the staff, of course, is working alongside, before it even gets to a commission, it's had a lot of staff work.
I'm just thinking, if you're going to do this due process, really, the commissions need to go through that as well and understand that.
I agree. It's a good point, and you're correct.
Good point. And, oh, hang on, just half a second, Jim. Can I suggest also that if you are not on Policy and Services Committee, I mean, if you have a global comment like what you just did, Tom, I think that's perfect. If you have specifics, though, and you're not on Policy and Services, this would be the time to raise any questions. Otherwise, you'll have opportunity at Policy and Services. Jim?
Thank you. Molly, I'm just, maybe as much of a question for you. I mean, if, if I were on the council, I'd be wondering what this means, what are the implications of this hearing this right now about the business of being on the council? So, I, I'm presuming that, you know, out of the 100% of the work that the council does at a meeting or over this course of a year, I'm just making it up, maybe there's some 20% of what the council deals with that is the council in some adjudicatory role or some other sort of formal due process role where this applies. The broad swath of legislative transactional work that the council does in public is of a, it may have some other issues, but it's, it's different than in this particular regard. And one of the things we may want to do ultimately is having some way to clearly distinguish between those items for the, before the council. But on the, on the one hand, we could say, obviously, the council has to be free to think out loud in a council meeting and convince their colleagues and through motions and things like that. So, I just wanted to separate out that there might be legislative issues just as far as adequate support and notice of the council that don't have the same legal requirements that, but they have, may, may have some protocols you ultimately want to explore that would be something, if this goes to PNS, we'd talk about that. But this, this isn't like some gag order on the majority of what the council is going to do at a meeting. Well, I'm sure that there's a little bit of sense of how do, how do you navigate what that boundary is, but there's some very specific circumstances where what, what you're trying to focus on could be quite problematic if we don't follow it.
Yes, thank you very much. And I think that that assessment, 20% or maybe 15%, is pretty accurate. Most of the time, you're sitting as a legislative or a policy body. And, and I don't wish to scare folks. I mean, it, it is contemplated that people bring their life experience, their general knowledge, their intelligence to bear on a record that's before them when you're deciding on a, on a item. It really, my comments really reflect some new sort of can-do approach that, you know, council members and actually, members of our commissions were seeing this as well on the planning commission, of where folks are really diving in and doing some very specific research or data development. And I know that some of you have specifically asked me about that. So, that's really somewhat different than speaking from your general life experience and applying those thoughts to an item that's before you.
Pat, you got a question or comment?
One of each. So, on the, the first aspect about quasi-judicial matters, it's not that we're restricted from bringing information, it's simply that that information needs to be provided in advance to the parties that are affected, including the public and the, and the decision makers on it, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And certainly, as a policy matter, there are strong interests served by making sure it's provided to all of those people that you just identified. But oddly enough, legally, it's really only the folks who have property interests at stake that have a legal right to that.
And then the second element to this is, aside from whatever legal requirements we may have around this kind of pattern in a quasi-judicial hearing, I'd like to hear from colleagues about whether they have any interest in Policy and Services Committee discussing in greater depth, any recommendations on how to deal with a similar circumstance in a legislative hearing? So, we have a lot of, we have our procedures, which are, are binding, and then we have protocols, which are generally kind of agreed-upon practices, but they're not binding on the council as the way I think they're written.
Are you asking for my view on that?
No, I wasn't, but you were looking puzzled, and so, now I, now I want to know whether I spoke.
Well, I, I do have a slight, I have a slightly different view of it, Councilmember Burt. And I think Jim and I have never discussed it, but he might agree with me. When, when I read this document, the policies and protocols or protocols and procedures, whatever you call it, I don't see upright line between the two parts, and I, I really see a document that's adopted by the council to guide its own behavior. And I think, as we've seen over the years, it, it sometimes requires interpretation. It doesn't, it's just not, it, it's more in a set of guidelines that the council has to interpret and apply to itself, and, and you're applying it to each other, essentially. And, you know, oftentimes, questions don't come up. It, it is a very useful document, but, but sometimes it does require some interpretation.
Okay. So, setting aside for the moment whether we should have a greater clarity on the distinction between a policy and a protocol, which maybe your comments open up another question, what I was leading to was whether we should explore a recommendation, a recommended practice for council members if they have substantive materials that are relevant for a legislative discussion, and whether those should or should not be necessarily attempt, good effort made to share them with the council as a whole. And I don't necessarily have a clear answer to that question. Mine is, is this something that we should explore, or colleagues have no interest in exploring it?
So, I'll weigh in just briefly on that, is partly, I think, that'd be the discussion to be had at Policy and Services. And I'll add one comment to that is, for me, this is a component of public process and even transparency. So, it seems like if there is a body of evidence that's been, you know, researched or discovered, I think it makes, you know, applause to those who've done the, done the due diligence on, on researching and finding the information. And then disclosure, I think, for me, there's not much difference between legislative and quasi-judicial. So, that's my two cents. It's, remember a couple of years, a few years ago, after, when I was on council, we stopped the, the thing that had happened, that where applicants were bringing last-minute changes to projects to the council? And we put a stop to that. So, this is kind of almost the reverse of that. It's, and this, this is not to, you know, chastise anybody. It's, everybody, as, as Molly said, it's a, it's a can-do kind of attitude that we're seeing on both council and Planning Transportation Commission. So, it's, it's not, it's not a hand slap anywhere. It's just keeping us out of those potholes.
Just one more quick thought. I, I think, I think you said it very well, that there's life experience, knowledge. I think it's potentially a very slippery slope, and I think we should use kind of a light hand here, certainly for the judicial-type hearings, but, you know, whether something is, there's somebody's personal experience and they kind of explain something that they've learned versus doing a whole bunch of research, I think that could get a little tricky. And so, I think just we need to be careful about how we define that, talk about that.
And those of you on Policy and Services will discuss that. Liz?
I guess I'm seeing it quite differently. From the times that we have sat, and we have sat on other governing boards, as that quasi-judicial, we are extraordinarily careful about what we say. The, the chances of being sued are good, and I, I just see it quite differently. So, I think, Tom, you've spoken about a slippery slope. The slippery slope for me is that when you get into the judicial, that's what can be pulled out later, that's what can be brought into court, that's...
I was talking about even broadening it beyond.
Beyond that? Because...
He has it in another direction.
Okay. If that's what you mean, because I, I think that those are the ones that make me really uneasy and where I'm, I'm always tempted to say far less than I might in another situation. Greg?
Yeah, just a comment. I guess I would be very light-handed on the legislative issue because we live in a town where 50% of people have graduate degrees and 80% have VAs, and they come to meetings with ideas, and council members react, pick up on that and say, "Oh, yeah, that reminds me." So, I think we have to, in order to be able to respond to public comments made at the public meeting, we have to be fairly flexible in our responses.
So...
Respond to that?
Your on Policy and Services.
So, I, I don't understand that concern. I, I don't think what was being discussed was restraining anybody's ability to respond. It's if, a question, and I'm not advocating an outcome, but if on a legislative matter, if we as individuals do research and have new data, would it be a good practice to share that with the body as a whole in advance? That's quite different from what you just described.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking of the case, if someone makes a comment and rings a bell that, "Oh..." a bell that, oh, I just read an Economic Journal article.
Well, yeah, but that's carrying it to an extreme degree.
And I guess I would like to also add, sorry, Jim, that you not only potentially want to share it with your colleagues in advance, but also with your professional staff and the public, so that everybody really has a chance to be informed. And that allows council members to be more effective and also more inclusive.
Yes, if I, I was going down that, that line. In this, in this legislative arena, I, I think, I think what Pat said was a good way to be thinking about this and what Greg said earlier. We had a lot of discussion about advancing the release of a packet earlier so that the council and the public had more time and access to be prepared. So going to, going to the not-so-bright line or very bright line difference that Pat was drawing between protocols and practices or procedures, clearly, the council wants to think about some customs about how it wants to interact with each other, to be sort of fair, provide opportunities for everybody to get on the same page and the same thing for the public and for the staff. So I think with this goes to PNS, it would be worthwhile to, to sort of talk about that terrain and what the boundaries are that you're interested in exploring. You don't want to say, well, you can't bring up an original idea at the meeting. On the other hand, if you've got info that you've been putting together, what's the process for getting it to the council? And that could be an interesting conversation because you don't want to suddenly have dueling papers going on, you know, all week before between one and the other. And then how do you assimilate all of that? But I think the general intention ought to be, if, if there's information that, that would be used to, to make a decision upon that's complex enough, erring on the side of getting it out publicly in advance and considering slowing down taking action at a meeting if you're, if anybody's feeling like, whoa, that's very interesting, but it's too much, I haven't had a chance to assimilate that. What's the process to be able to, you know, not feel compelled that you've got to act on in that moment so that everybody has sort of the same information? I just would know, as the staff, pretty typically, it's easier for you to think about this with us. If we really bring something after a staff report at the very last minute that has a whole different sort of take on everything with a whole bunch of different data and we present it, for the most part, you're going to feel like, number one, why'd you bring it to us at the last minute? And number two, this is too much for us to absorb tonight. So I think you just want to think about what, what customs you want to talk about between yourselves so that, because in the end, the, the role of the council is to make a collective decision typically by a majority vote. But you would hope that there was, that there was a kind of open sort of playing field that everybody sort of, I understand why we're making those decisions anyway.
So I don't see any more comments on, on this particular aspect of procedures and protocols. A couple of us did send in, a couple of us did send in some suggestions. We have those carried over also from the retreat that people had submitted, again, from non-PNS committee members. Are there any additional suggestions? And Molly, if somebody wanted to send in some suggestions to be considered at PNS, could they do that subsequent to this meeting if they were just sent to the city clerk?
Yes.
So is that agreeable to folks? If you have any additional, now, if you're on Policy and Services, you can bring up your items there.
Mayor, may I just ask a clarifying question? I, I think there might be a little confusion here. The way we listed the agenda was A, procedures and protocols, B, meeting management, C, committees, D, staff relations. We were talking about this beforehand, as I recall. The, the way the council governs itself is basically you make decisions about how you're going to govern yourself, and you adopt them through procedures or protocols, or you, they're in the muni code, or the voters, through the charter, memorialize it in the charter. Almost everything that, that else that the council has brought up could ultimately be a procedures and protocol discussion. If the council wants to memorialize a decision about what you want to do, you may say on meeting management, we want to put that change in the procedures and protocols, right? So there's this one grouping of reviewing the existing procedures and protocols and things that have been triggered as issues and things, your policies you're thinking about. And then some of these other things ultimately, when you get into, it very well may be that could also say, we ought to send that to PNS also as part of a policy and procedures discussion.
Makes sense. And actually, what I was going to suggest is when we get through A, B, C, D, is to have some council direction for PNS or thoughts about additional committees of the whole meetings or something of that nature, but going through A, B, C, D, because yes, anything that we do here might affect or influence procedures and protocols. Yes, Pat?
And are we using informal...
Yes.
Okay. So Tom was just pointing out that there were a number of these items that we had before so that we actually took straw votes to refer them to PNS at the retreat. And maybe we should summarize those so that everybody understands what's already gone onto a, a different table. And Tom, Tom's already looked at it if you want him to...
Page 22, 23.
None of the, none of the procedures and protocols. Oh, hang on a second. There were meeting management?
No.
Hold on.
How about if Tom summarizes that?
Are you on the minutes?
Yeah, on the minutes, on page 22, we referred, and 23, we referred three things to Policy and Services already and voted on those.
Yes.
So guidelines for telephone participation, review of rules regarding council procedures on consent items, and clarifying the role of in the agenda setting.
And I had actually from my notes from the retreat that in the handout that was from the retreat that starts out meeting management and then also includes procedures and protocols, I had everything under procedures and protocols. Number one was that those were to be sent to PNS. And maybe that's exactly the same as what you just read, but I was tracking differently? So, yes.
One and two. Sorry, one and two, both were referred to Policy and Services.
One and two? Okay. I didn't have that in my notes. So, okay, good. Thank you for that. And I think most of those are also included in either Greg's or my comments or suggestions. So thank you for that, Tom. So moving to meeting management, again, we had suggestions that came forward at the retreat.
Karen, before you go on to that...
Yes.
As, as a general comment, I don't know where it fits in, except that one of the speakers earlier referenced the way things have changed over the last 15 or 20 years. I think we should expect change. I don't think we are going to be, have our feet in the concrete of the past. It has been mentioned that at one point, the public had five minutes to talk. I think everything evolves, and I think what we're looking at tonight as well is some kind of evolution and some kind of change. So I, you know, for, for what may have happened 20 years ago, fine, worked for that, that period of time. But I think we should be looking at what works for us now in the middle of this current
Thank you for the comment. And does anyone have suggestions beyond or a comment about what was included in the packet for the retreat that's been handed out again this evening?
The whole packet?
For meeting management. Try to, try to do lumps here. We just got the minutes at places, so I didn't have a chance to read the minutes having to do with meeting management.
The meeting, the retreat minutes on page 24 said, "All meeting management items would be referred to the committee of the whole."
We never voted on that.
Yeah, it does later on. Is it six for three vote? Five vote, page 24.
And so do we have any additional thoughts on meeting management that should be referred?
Just clarification, we voted on extending 30 minutes. I don't think we ever voted on referring everything to committee of the whole.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. Good try.
Corey?
Yeah, and again, just kind of continuing on with that, you know, we made the decision because Councilmember Scharf wasn't going to be there, that we would not make any decisions during that final part of the discussion, that we would continue it. I noticed that Councilmember Scharf is not here tonight.
Enough of that curse.
So going back to, does anyone have anything to add for consideration for Policy and Services under meeting management topics?
Do we need a motion for what to consider? We had a discussion, but I don't know that we ever resolved anything.
I'd like to hold off on motions until we get to the end of this. And so I'm going to make just a couple or three comments on this, which is, as you all have gotten an email from city clerk about some of our upcoming agenda items. And we have very, very full agendas, big items, really important items. We've had a hard time getting a second meeting time for a committee of the whole to adjourn. We're all busy people, and this is, you know, for a large part, a volunteer position. But in terms of meeting management, it's not in the minutes. I didn't bring it up at the retreat, but I'm asking for, I think and hope Vice Mayor would join me in this, that people do respect what other people have said and either if you don't have something significant to add or just want to chime in on what somebody else has said, not to take a lot of time just taking the mic. It's, it's a hard thing not to do because we're all prone to want to do that, get our airtime. So I'm as guilty as anybody else, so I'm reining myself in too. And then also, just consider how much time that we have on an item and what the full agenda is, and to be concise and to stay on point. That's a big one, to really stay on point. So these aren't things to go through PNS vetting. These are just requests from, from a chair who's trying to do the best to satisfy the request by council members to end meetings by 11:00. Pat?
Well, Karen, this actually, in a way, ties into this thing I'm going to bring up later, which is having a better distinction on policies versus protocols. And it's always bugged me that, it wasn't clear when I read it. I always took policies to mean rules and protocols to be essentially generally agreed upon practices. But we don't state that clearly. And if protocols may be practices, then something like that can at least be added into what are essentially guidelines for the council. And the more that we put it out there, it's not binding. It doesn't say that you can, you can't speak even if you're going to be repeating essentially what others have said, but it may remind us to try to avoid it. And I think it's good to have those things there. So I would actually suggest that we, we also refer that over to PNS, and we'll see if we can recommend some language. But it would only be meaningful if we have better clarification on what's a policy versus what's a protocol.
Appreciate that. And I just want to be very clear that none of these comments are intended to curtail anyone's right to speak or participate in the meeting. This is just a matter of being efficient and effective. That's the whole intention of this, so I appreciate that. There, I don't see any other hands for adding any things, any other considerations under meeting management than what we had at the retreat. So we'll move on to C, which is committees. And any thoughts or comments that need, want to be added to that matter? So I will...
Can I?
Yeah, sure, Corey.
Well, actually, sorry, just to go back one step on meeting management, correct me if I was, if I'm mistaken, but I don't think we've decided yet to send any of those many recommendations to Policy and Services for consideration. Right now, they're going, they've been written up, we talked about them at Mitchell Park, and that's where they're all going to die unless we send them to Policy and Services. So I just want to make sure we're clear. Are we all deciding we don't want PNS to consider any of those many recommendations regarding meeting management, or...
I may have said this before you came in.
So again, I apologize for being late.
That's okay, that's okay. I may have said this before you came in, though, that I'd like to get through D and then see why we want to go back and say, this is going to Policy and Services, or we want another committee of the whole meeting, or that nature. That's why we're not taking action on any of these individually yet.
Understood.
Okay? So committees.
Is there anything proposed right now around committees, or we're just starting that conversation?
So committees, there are two, three suggestions.
Two of yours.
That were part of the retreat. Two, two from, two from Tom and one from, one from me. So, so those are, so those are on the table. If, nobody else have, has comments? I did have one thing that I wanted to bring up then is, as a member of the Regional Housing Mandate Committee this last year and others of you here as well, we did make some commitment to the public, and council agreed when it went to the full council that we would continue to look at housing sites. Hillary, you'll recall this. We did say that we would continue to look at housing sites, and we also said that we would bring forward suggestions or comments or some approach to lobbyists about housing mandates and especially density bonus law. So right now, there is not a Regional Housing Mandate Committee. If we are not going to have one, then we need to assign those tasks to another body. Is that Policy and Services? Is it the whole council? Is it an ad hoc subcommittee of the council? How do we want to address that? So that I think we do need to, do need to address because we have those outstanding, that outstanding work that we committed to.
Is that a question?
It is a question, yes.
I mean, is that, would, would our comp plan discussion be a logical time and place to have that, or is that something that's separate from, from that dialogue that we're going to have that'll undoubtedly involve where we want housing to be, you know, additional housing to be kind of strategically placed in the city?
From my perspective, if I can speak as a member of the mandate committee, Housing Mandate Committee, is there are two different elements to that. The lobbying aspect of it, I don't think is a part of the comprehensive plan discussion.
Which, I'm sorry, which lobbying is?
Regional housing, the, excuse me, the housing mandates or density bonus law.
Okay. So the legislative aspect?
Yes, the legislative aspects, that would not be part of the comprehensive plan discussion.
Absolutely not, yeah.
And I guess as far as housing sites, those are usually more zoning issues than comprehensive plan broader vision issues, from my perspective. Hillary, do you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Hillary. Get them on the planning director. Wow. The, we did make a commitment in the housing element that we would look at potentially eliminating some sites in the southern part of the city along San Antonio and South El Camino and looking at either new sites or increased densities in downtown and California Avenue. So that is on our list of things to do as part of the comprehensive plan update. And it's specifically one of the choices that we're trying to analyze to provide some good analysis and data for the community and the council to understand what the implications of those choices would be. So a long way of saying, I think we're going to get to it in the comprehensive plan update.
And Jim?
I preface this when we were talking very briefly before the meeting about getting too philosophical about this stuff, but it, it seems to me that overall, what the council's faced with right now is, one, what is it that you want to do? What do you want to get accomplished as a council? And secondly, how do you want to do it? How do you want to get that work done? And so the question of committees partly seems to fall into there. What, what is the role of committees for the council? I mean, getting clearer about why you might want a committee and need a committee and being able to be clear about how those would be set up and how they would manage, be managed. I don't mean this as a criticism, but we, we, we could, I mean, we, we went through a period where we really started to have a proliferation of committees. And to the extent that those, each one's a good idea, the, you know, they, they all consume resources, whether it's time, money, your staff, or you sacrifice other priorities sometimes. resources, whether it's time, money, your staff, or you sacrifice other priorities sometimes when you get in those settings. And so, I think the council getting clear about, you know, what committees you're truly committed to, I personally don't think you need to create a committee to solve a particular problem every time you got a particular problem. So, I think, for example, the density bonus issue can be handled through our ledge process and the council as a whole, as opposed to setting up a committee. If there was a body of work around housing that began to accumulate, that really said, wow, you really need some focused attention, that would be great. And then, the council has to be able to have the capacity to support the committee's work also. So, I just sort of would posit that. Clearly, you've got a finance committee and a policy committee. They've been longstanding, or two standing committees, and over the past three or four years, the Policy and Services Committee has grown into a full-fledged committee. When I got here, nobody wanted to be on Policy and Services, because nothing was being done there. So, that, you have two viable standing committees. I think talking about the frequency of meetings, and what they do, and then any other things you do, would be really important. But always, why have a committee? Obviously, smaller size, sometimes you can get in more detail. If the council was willing to delegate a lot to a committee, then that can be an argument for a committee. If it has to be redone at the council, sometimes it raises questions whether or not you need a committee.
Pat?
So, on the regional, the question about the Regional Housing Mandate Committee issues, on the lobbying, I had actually thought that when, we deferred this item, as I recall, on our legislative agenda, and I had intended to have that, the density bonus law, added to that agenda, because I don't think it's there. I assume others might have the same interest. So, I think we can cover that aspect, and Hillary seems to have clarified that unless people feel strongly that it shouldn't be part of the comp plan, it looks like the housing sites would be fold in the comp plan. I had one other item that I'm not looking for the council to make a decision on tonight, but if people want to weigh into it, and then maybe we'll fold it over. But that is, Tom and I, we're talking about, we're on the City School Liaison Committee this year, and there are some important issues that could potentially be, use that shared committee to really have deeper collaboration and policy discussions with the school board through their representatives. Historically, it's been principally informational as a committee, just kind of sharing information. And frankly, I can watch the school board meeting, and read in the press about what they did, and I don't need to have staff spend a bunch of time doing that. I'd like to see it be more substantive. So, we have things like where are we headed with Project Safety Net? That popped up for the first time in a couple of years before the Policy and Services. Would it be better to have City School Committee be the lead committee advising the council, or recommending to the council on that? I don't know. Another one might be, as we begin to kick off the coverly planning, would that be, we don't have a coverly committee anymore, would that be an appropriate one to refer to them? Tom talked about the relationship of the city and land use with the school district needing to look for future school sites. So, that might be another one. Just some examples, and others may have things that frankly, those who served on that committee last year would have liked to have been able to dig into deeper, and those might be ideas. Liz, I don't know if you have. But I wanted to get, at a conceptual level, whether the council would be interested in it being a more substantive committee around collaboration and policy, rather than being principally informational. And then, we could talk at a different time about what specific items might be referred to.
Tom?
If I could speak to the things that are in the report there, and I hear what you said about committees. So, you know, my proposal was that we would form a council committee around the top priorities. And so, in terms, you know, the comp plan was one of the priorities, so there would be a council committee around the comp plan. That would be a perfect place to follow up on the housing change, but also include other elements of the comp plan. Healthy city, you know, if it's part of the City School Liaison, maybe that's it, or maybe we have a separate healthy city committee. And then, the third one was the infrastructure execution. And so, again, we've said those are priorities, so if those are our priorities, should we have committees focused around those four priorities? So, that was my first point. My second point was, you know, I'd like to see us outline our priorities with directions to our key advisory commissions and boards, and maybe that's just a letter that comes from council that we vote on, or something, but some kind of thing that says, here's the priorities we decided on the year, here's how we'd like you to evaluate projects, and the criteria we'd like you to use. Because I've talked a little bit to people on the ARB and the PTC, and I think they feel like they're not getting a very particular direction from us. So, that was the idea behind my second point there.
Liz?
Yeah, Karen, just to respond, Tom, to your comments regarding the committees, and thinking also of Jim's comments, two things. Your idea is interesting. It's got some validity. I am concerned about the number of meetings we are currently committed to, though, and the time that, I know that the clerk's office is trying to pull all of this together. It's tempting to add committees, but I think somehow, if we had a committee that was on the comp plan, we would take ourselves into a very different model than what we currently have done, where I think we're pretty much all working together to try and get the comp plan together. We have, in the past, had a specific committee that dealt with the technology, but I think it's some real merit at the time. But again, it was, it was pretty time-consuming. As far as the healthy cities, that, and Karen and I may look at this somewhat differently, but I look at that one as one that could certainly come up with City School, but also one that really ties into land use. That's one of the biggest ties I have dealt with, when, both at the county level and at city level, when people have woven that in, has a great deal to do with, you know, how can you get out? How can you weave health into your everyday? I think this is interesting to think about, to have a specific committee for that. As I said, I'm concerned about two things, the amount of staff time, and the amount of our time. I think we are together several nights, I'm, I'm out three nights a week approximately for this job, which is, it seems fairly time-consuming at this point. And I just want us to be really cautious about when we start new committees, and whether or not those have merit as a standalone, or really could be woven into some of the other committees we're already doing. And I think Pat made a very good point about City School. We've some of that, for example, Project Safety Net, which is definitely about mental health, fits right in there.
Right. And so, maybe we could look at some of those existing committees. I think the Regional Housing Mandate Committee worked well. They're kind of done, so maybe that just becomes the comp plan committee, and you're not really adding another committee, you're just replacing it.
Well, I'd be interested in what others think. Somehow, a comp plan committee seems to me as though the comp plan is kind of our job, all nine of us working together. It's not, and it's difficult, because we will really struggle with that. But I'd be interested, if some of the rest of you think you need a specific comp plan committee, that would be interesting.
Mark?
So, Liz, you kind of got to where I was going, which is, and, you know, which Jim highlighted that resonated with me, which is, you know, it doesn't make sense to have a committee that's just going to do work that the whole council is going to redo with all nine of us. And I feel like I've seen that happen with the comp plan, pretty much every meeting we have. We redo what we've done in the past, let alone what a committee's done in the past. And so, you know, I mean, I'm not going to address specifically different items, different issues that might deserve a committee or not, unless we actually get into that minute of a discussion. But I would just say that when we are identifying whether or not to add new committees, a big thing for me is going to be, are we just going to rehash the entire argument out at council level? I mean, I think for, you know, Regional Housing Mandate Committee and others made sense, because there wasn't a lot of controversy about it once it reached the full council level. We'd have a discussion, but rarely would, you know, that lead to a lot of big changes to what the committee work was, or what committee work was completed. And so, that's just kind of a thought that I have on that. I'm intrigued about the idea of, you know, adding work to the committees that already exist. I don't know how I'd feel, I mean, just, you know, answering specifically to some of the points that Pat made, I don't know how I'd feel about coverly, and kind of two council members vetting the issues for that. I think that should probably be more council members involved in that conversation. But Project Safety Net and others that really are involved with the school district, I think that probably makes a lot of sense. Yeah, I guess the thoughts I have on that.
Greg?
Yeah, I like the idea of the school liaison committee, taking on specific issues, where we can work in cooperation with the school district. I am a little hesitant about forming new council committees, especially on important issues like the comp plan, or land use, because those are such important issues that the full council is engaged in. It's hard to have a committee taking some responsibility for them. But I like very much the number two item there. The first sentence talks about council priorities be given to the committees, and commissions and boards is not good. But the second sentence is very interesting. It says, "Council to approve and send specific directions." Now, if we're going to have committees discussing important items, these commissions and boards are good places, maybe, to have clear council direction. Here's the issues we need to look at, and have the PTC, the ARB, the HRB, Parks and Rec do some of that work. The results are hearings, questions, staff responses, motions. You have a full outline of a group of five, seven, nine people, discussing and working on these issues, sharing with us. And I think, given better council direction of what we want, what the goal is, what the questions we need answered are, I mean, here's a, you know, a commission form, committee form, that seemed, could work very effectively to help leverage council time. So, I'm very interested in the second sentence in number two.
Cory?
So, yeah, I think I agree with Greg Schmidt, that I'm also interested in whether, oh, can you hear me? Great. So, picking up on what Councilmember Schmidt was, or Vice Mayor Schmidt was saying, yeah, I wonder if, just maybe, we could combine Tom's points one and two, and rather than having committees for each of these four priorities, we assign committees to be leads on, existing, you know, boards and commissions, to be leads on each of our priorities at a board and commission level. Or maybe a couple of boards would need to take a couple of them, but maybe ask, for instance, HRB, maybe along with Parks and Rec, to work on healthy cities. Maybe ask ARB and PTC to really focus on built environment and the comp plan, et cetera. I'm curious whether there is any way that we can, that we can do that, so that we provide some real clear direction for the year, where those boards and commissions might want to spend a little bit of extra time, and let them take an ownership role as well on these priorities, without wanting to give up our role as leaders on them. I'd also like to address Councilmember Burt's proposal about the City School Liaison Committee. I would like to see that be a more substantive organization, that's capable of doing more real work, rolling up their sleeves, getting some work done. And if, you know, if there's a need for, you know, a third council member, or something to be, or a third person from the, well, easier to have a third person from a nine-member council than a third person from a five-member school board be there. But if we need to add another council member, I'd be open to that. But I am interested in how that group, the City School Liaison Committee, can really get some stuff done, and bring it back to their respective larger bodies, the school board and the city council, and say, here's a proposal we worked out regarding, whether it's Project Safety Net, coverly, bike routes, traffic, you know, cars and shuttles to get kids to school, shared use of fields and gems, any other land use issues. Because there is so much, I think we all recognize, there is so much shared interest in so many very close policy and land use and property interactions, I would very much be interested in exploring an expansion of the purview of that organization.
Mark?
Apologies for going on a second round, I try not to, but luckily, this is informal. I mean, I think in theory, it's a good idea to give, you know, a lot of direction to our committees and commissions, and I think we should, we should try to where possible. But I think, you know, I'm kind of thinking of this as like a Supreme Court opinion, where if we're trying to give specific direction on how we want projects evaluated, and criteria we'd like them to use in their report back to us, you're probably going to have a majority opinion and three minority opinions, or, I mean, you know, everybody has their own opinion on how the different committees and commissions should be doing their job, which I think we try to, you know, you know, give to them when we have our annual hour-long meetings with them. Obviously, that's never enough time, and they hear nine different opinions, but I think that's the reality of it, is there will be nine different opinions. So, unless we come up with a process to solve that problem, or unless we want to be coming up with letters that get voted on, and there's a five-four from the council, you know, to the PTC to do X, we need to think about how we're actually going to achieve that objective.
Karen, can I do one more? Because I want to also come back to Pat's suggestion.
Liz, and then I think Pat has a comment, too.
And Mark, I would concur with you. That's, I think it's very difficult to give very specific direction from nine different people. But I want to talk a little about City School, because there's always a very interesting and kind of sensitive exchange that goes on with the school district. Two of us have served on the school district, and sometimes there is some pushback. And I do recall all the number of meetings I've been in, where we discussed shared facilities, shared fields, shared, in fact, even when childcare began a long time ago, there was a huge discussion about whether or not childcare should be in the schools, or should it be someplace else. It was a long discussion. It doesn't disparage at all attempting to alter that committee, and being a more robust and effective one, but I think it also says, they have their own body of challenges and charges to them. There are five of them. They have as big a budget as we do. They have lots of land that they control. And one of the things I would put out to you right now is, the new art building, or the new performing arts building at Pallie, has people in a bit of a standoff looking at it. If you're sitting at Town and Country, and you see this enormous building going up across the street, as many people have said to me, how did you guys approve that? I said, well, nothing to do with approving that. That's, a school district can do on their own land what they want to do on their own land. So, simply by way of saying, I think it's, that would be a very interesting direction for you, Tom and Pat, to go on. And at the same time, I know it has a, it has, as I mentioned, an area of sensitivity to it that we need to be very aware of. Still gives you a great chance to work together closely, as long as everyone's on the same page. Pat?
Well, first, following on to Liz's comment-
Well, first following on to Liz's comments, I appreciate that that really has been a history of different times, stronger substance to that committee, and then probably more of the time, less substance. But, and we've had things, Corey mentioned a number of these items. These actually have been over the years. Active engagements between the city and the school district on shared gym space, shared field space. We have a whole bunch of agreements. We run the middle school athletic program through our rec department. But I think that we not only have certain things on the horizon that really lend themselves to maybe having greater dialogue through this, but we do have some changes. I mean, we have a new school board and a new superintendent. And I know Jim has talked about what a sea change it really was in the Coverley negotiations when the new superintendent came on, and they were able to resolve things in really short order. And I know a number of the candidates who, when they ran for school board and subsequently got elected, talked about having greater city school engagement. So that's been out there over the recent months as something that has either shown up in substantive changes, as we've seen with the superintendent, or kind of intentions as were vocalized by now school board members. So I think there's an opportunity there. We'll have to see what comes out of that. Mark had raised concerns on delegating too much of the Coverley issue, for instance, to the city school liaison committee. And, I mean, we certainly can circumscribe what we're delegating. And there are what we're, I wasn't envisioning that outcomes would be part of this, design outcomes or those things. But collaborating on the process to keep the ball rolling and those kinds of things, and it's going to be iterative. So if we get, if we, as a committee, get draft information, and then we need council guidance, committees don't make decisions. So this, like anything else, would come to the full council, and the council would get to decide whatever amount of discussion they want to have on the issue. It kind of goes back to this question earlier of, well, what is the role of the committee? And it's to be able to have opportunities for deeper dives and less formal discussions and vetting things that help the council come to better decisions and do so more efficiently. And I think those are the main rules. Which then goes to Tom's questions on these, whether there should be committees around the three council priorities. At first, I wasn't quite sure what it meant there, and now I understand it. So when we discuss our priorities, the infrastructure we had as a priority, because this is, the next two years are going to be big years of implementation. But there's not a great deal that I can think of that is going to be, needed to be vetted as council that, for instance, we have one thing coming up on the agenda about public safety building sites. That's coming directly to the full council, as I think that should. I just don't see something like that going through a committee. So the infrastructure didn't really strike me as one that warranted it. But then it, Tom's comments got me thinking about the comp plan and the Healthy Cities. And we have been going back and forth on the comp plan, and it caused me to question, would we have less back and forth if we had a committee that was more engaged with kind of the vetting of this process and coming back to the council with recommendations? I don't know the answer to that. But one possibility for us to consider is something I think I brought up before, which is whether we should ask the mayor to appoint city council liaisons to this community advisory committee, which is really about process for community engagement as opposed to the substance. And that would be another alternative, is that we, instead of creating a council committee, we have liaisons, maybe two or something. So that's something to stew about, and I'm just putting these on the table, not necessarily recommending even these things. And then on the Healthy City, that's different. That's a brand-new concept that we haven't really vetted. What's it going to mean? And I know some of my colleagues have studied this more and have a better understanding of where this might take us than perhaps we as a full council do. And so whether that is something that's referred to policy and services, or it can be an ad hoc committee. And we had, over the last couple of years, we had some committees that were created as standing committees. And the general rule of thumb is it should be less than a year and for a topic that has a finite kind of set of objectives, and they begin and they end. And if the objectives might be for Healthy City is to have an ad hoc committee that meets a couple of times, to come to the full council with a framework for Healthy Cities, where we kind of right now are somewhat of a blank slate on that. I know that some colleagues have, like I said, a better understanding of where this might head. Maybe that would be something that would be useful. So rather than kind of set it up as each of these priorities having a committee, maybe this proposal causes us to think, well, how do we address the concern in some appropriate way for each of these?
Tom, and then at 6:21, and at 6:30, and we have one more item to cover, and at 6:30, well, I can do it now, but I'll wait till 6:30. I want to ask if we can, if councilmembers can stay over for just a few more minutes, because I think we can actually knock off some things tonight. So, Tom?
So just to react to a few comments, so I think the comp plan's been under update for like eight years or something. And Corey, I think, I don't know if you know, but I think it was referred to the PTC as the primary driver for a number of years. And so that's really what was kind of behind this thought. And I think currently, the comp plan comes back to council maybe every four to six months, you know? And I'm just really suggesting that we don't do business as usual if this is one of our top priorities as a council. Having a committee on it allow us to touch it more often. And so when I said model after the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, just to expand on that a little bit, you know, there was a citizens, resident working group, they were making recommendations, there was a steering group of committee, and then those were, you know, referred to the full council. And so it's basically taking that structure, that idea, applying it to the comp plan. You know, I know currently the citizens group is more about communication. Perhaps we consider changing that and having them making recommendations to a committee. But Greg, I know you've, you know, mentioned concern about how often it comes back. And so that was really the idea behind this, is if it's truly one of our priorities, it would have council involvement more frequently.
Any other comments on this topic? And, okay, so we'll go to, a couple of members of the public here who are either just listening in or are wishing to speak. If you do wish to speak, just give a card to city clerk and request an item. Staff relations. And there were several suggestions also put forward in the retreat information, several submissions there. Does anyone have anything to add beyond that? This one might go quite quickly.
Where? Is that where?
It's, it looks like this.
Back, fourth page, I think. Is that right? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, that's what I'm referring to. Yes, it starts out saying, "Staff, council, relations, policy implementation." So does anyone have anything to add to that?
I think, um, city manager was, sorry.
You were going to come back with an update to that prioritization exercise.
So, so we have a handout. It's not perfected, but I think it's workable enough for the council to, you know, take it and give your feedback to us. So I've got the, here, just extra large, so that you can distinguish it from your other paper.
So what?
Well, this is on sort of the work plan projects that track with your, the priorities as you've adopted them. And you actually have four priorities this year. The comp plan, infrastructure, Healthy City, Healthy Communities, and the built environment, transportation, parking and mobility, something like that. So we might have somewhat imperfectly identified them by those priorities. We used some judgment. We threw a lot of things under this built environment category. And we added some scale information. One, identifying whether or not this was a major effort, modest effort or almost done, as you had sort of suggested, and then also some sense of the urgency, high, medium, or low.
Coming back to the note.
Uh huh, yes. So here is the suggestion, is that I was planning on passing these out to you all. There are some blank spaces at the back, and obviously, if you needed more, you could add some. There are clearly high-level projects and issues that the council is facing that we have not included on the list, partly because initially we didn't have them in there, trying to anticipate what your priorities were. But if you look on here, for example, we don't have Buena Vista listed, we don't have the Creek JPA or the golf course project listed, you know, both of which are kind of big issues in the infrastructure, some other area. You guys helped me out, some of the, we don't have the airport in here, we don't have the Noel Bridge project. There are a number of things that you might say are at the council level of importance, particularly as it relates to either policy issues or public interest or concern that might need to be added here. But this is, in a sense, kind of the work plan related to the council priorities. So I would pass those, these out and ask you to look at them, maybe give your own rating as to how urgent you see these are. The staff did this very quickly, and of course, you'll see many of them are high, because they're connected to the council priorities, so it makes sense that that would be the case. So I'll just start passing, let's pass them to Mark and pass those around. And our thought was to at least get some feedback from you as to how you see these items in, what do you think, mayor, two weeks' time roughly?
Yes, yeah, two weeks.
You set the time. The idea would be then we could go back and incorporate what you've done and reorder it as need be, or add some items. That being said, I mean, my own take is there's a heck of a lot of stuff here for this one year, all of which are pretty important, quite transformative, and again, built around your priorities. So it might help inform a little bit some of the conversations you ultimately want to have about some of these committees. I would pass out, yeah, for example, Project Safety Net is not listed on here, for example. So again, that's a big issue that needs to be added and included. So just responding to Councilmember Tho' Voice's question there, I see that as different than what the mayor have, you've listed as the first item here, which sounds like this would potentially get into much more depth than just the council initiatives and priorities.
Actually, this very much addresses it.
Oh, okay.
It very much addresses it. And, Tom?
Well, this is great. I guess when you handed this one out at the retreat, it was kind of blank. I thought the idea was you were going to survey all of us. Are you asking us?
That's what I'm asking you to do is take this, and you may want to, you may have different impressions on the scale than we do, but...
But you've already like answered the questions, like, do you want us to, is it the urgency column?
Yeah, I think it's the urgency, because I don't think the council would be in a position to sort of say, how done are we, not on it. But you may raise some questions, but clearly the sense of the urgency. Of course, then we start to get into some forced choice issues probably as...
Yeah, I guess, I mean, how would you like to see this? If you sent this out electronically and we each ordered them, you could do like an average at the council, or you just want to see if we agree with your urgencies?
Can I make a, so, it's where I was going to, it's great to collect the individual responses from council members, but I think that we need to come together in some form and see if we agree or not, because otherwise, it isn't really a decision of the whole. It's a decision of individual council members come together, and it's a different thing, I think. One column I noticed, this is great to have, and I appreciate you bringing this to the retreat and this. So, yeah, that's my comment.
Well, if I could add, I mean, I think some different slices could be worthwhile, and then how we start to combine them, it's ultimately to inform what council members individually, how you're seeing things. You know, I don't see that there would be anything wrong with you even looking at each, first of all, you may not agree that we've categorized all of these right, I mean, in as far as what the council priority is, but you might want to look within each of those priorities and array them in some order yourself, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It would just be very helpful, and then we could, we could report that back to you.
Yes, that's what I was thinking, there would be, ask us in a structured way, like, maybe we rank order each priority? That forces us to make trade-offs rather than say everything is important?
Right.
Or you give us 100 points, we allocate 100 points among the priority.
Why don't you give us, give us a certain number of top strategies, truly, and just say, here, this would help us, give us 10 top, give us five top, whatever it might be. Otherwise, we may just go through, find, you know, 50 top urgencies that we've got on this.
Right. Well, the problem is, right now, everything on this list, you have already directed us in some fashion. So, but I do think that just asking you to rank order them starts to give us some real information, particularly when we see the patterns of rankings. It may actually really help you in this committee discussion about structuring some agendas to deal with some issues or problems.
One more thing on this, excuse me, Karen, but the one thing that would jump out at me right away is there are some really different cost amounts to these. So if, you know, looking just quickly, and I just saw Fry's site here somewhere, that's extensive, probably is going to take a fair amount of expense, because it'll take more staff time, and yet I think it's a really high priority.
I think with that one, don't we have grant monies for that exercise, Hillary? For the Fry's site, don't we have grant monies for that?
Yes.
Well, and I think when we see, when we see your rankings and the pattern, you can discuss them, then we can start to talk about what the costs are, and then you start to prioritize it. If I can follow, I think it was Pat who was talking about the priorities. My bias would say there are a lot of the priorities on the infrastructure side. I don't want to say that they're on autopilot, but they don't really need a lot of near-term council interaction, policy decisions. It's more about us just operationalizing. We may hit some points where there's a particular decision that's made. Take the decision on the pedestrian bridge. The council's going to have to choose which one of those that is. But once we do that, it's going to be pretty perfunctory. That's going to be very different than what are the choices you're making on the comp plan, or how do you have to engage with another body on some of these issues like Project Safety Net that can't be advanced by the city unilaterally? And then you'll just have more, you'll be able to say, yeah, let's be sure we work on what's most important, and some of these other things, we can maybe delegate more than others.
Greg.
Yeah, I think you've hit on the critical issues. This is a list of all the things we're going to do this year. And you have identified most of them as high or medium priorities. And we agree at the end of the year, we want to look and say, these have all been done. But the council, I guess, has a special focus... But the council, I guess, has a special focus of making sure that the decision process is working. So, we want to figure out how to leverage policy time and make sure that policy is clear. So, you mentioned agendas is the key thing, and maybe the critical thing the council should be looking at is how do we prioritize agendas, so that, you know, those that have a decision up front are on the agendas as soon as they could be, and those that are already, the policy is clear, don't need to be agendized, but monitored and looked at. So, I would think the key part of the council in here is agenda setting, of does the council want to identify those of these items where some policy decision or discretion is important and should be agendized soon.
Just following on to that, I was realizing, as I was thinking about what Greg was talking about, and looking at how this is formatted, we have 2015 tasks, and actually, under them appear to be certain things that are staff tasks, and certain things that are council actions. And maybe we simply break that into two columns, so that we see more clearly what are the things we're going to have to do, which would drive agenda setting and those things, versus the other things that are kind of informative to us. As I was looking at page three, there's a whole bunch of major utility system upgrades that are just ongoing for many years. And aside from all five of them being listed as high urgency, which kind of, it doesn't sound like, to me, like they all necessarily are high urgency, they may be high importance. And that was one of the things that we were talking about in the retreat, is distinguishing between urgency and importance. And people start wanting to move things, if you give a column titled urgency, somebody who thinks it's important, they want to move it into the urgent category. And that can really kind of screw up the decision-making. And then, I don't know how to contend with the things that are in the category, like you said, where they're ongoing. And they're very, like, on these, these five big, multi-million-dollar utilities projects in capital improvements, there are very few, if any, council actions that yet have to be made. We've given that policy endorsement, often some time ago, they've been occurring pretty well on schedule, and they're important. If we didn't do them, then we'd have a problem. So, that's just another comment on how to maybe further refine this thing. But it's great to see all this together, you know, on the infrastructure. BE stands for what, under?
Built Environment.
Built Environment, oh, okay. So, then, maybe some of these, we need to look at whether, under council priority, they fall under more than one. Because I was looking for that under infrastructure, and it is under our infrastructure task, and it was one that came to mind when we were thinking about, or talking about, well, what infrastructure things might come back to the council? Well, location and size of a garage is going to be a decision in the next year or two. And frankly, I recall about three years ago, on Policy and Services Committee, we had a different matrix, do you remember this one? Where we looked at what was then the work plan, and everybody was struggling with how do we deal with it? And part of that was looking at whether, how different initiatives fulfilled a variety of different council priorities, and even some things that were kind of core values at that time, that were informally core values. And so, I would suggest that we look at broadening what each of these may fulfill, a primary and a secondary perhaps, and look back at how we did that. Because I don't have it in front of me, but I think there may be some things that we sorted through and came up with there, that we don't have to reinvent the wheel here.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, Madam Mayor. I think it's a good point. I think, I think we should keep in mind that even this, this matrix serves multiple purposes. One was just to collect what the council could be expected to report on to the community had occurred under these areas. So, like, these, in a sense, almost routine issues, like the utility infrastructure things are there. Then, there's this, as you said, what does this say about where the council needs to spend its time in particular this year? And how do you, how do you push those priorities? And you can almost take those, you know, probably take 25% of the issues on here off, and just say, look, we've already pretty much decided we're going to delegate those, and unless there's a resource issue, because the staff who have to deliver on that are also working on this other thing, we can pretty much be sure, you're just going to hold us accountable for delivering on those. But these issues that have these policy, political, representational issues for the public and the community that only the council can provide, you've got to make sure you're carving out enough time for yourself and for the staff to support you on those things. And that's where I think the ranking will start to help push priorities. And we can, I wouldn't say, this shouldn't be static, this should be dynamic, so that we're using as the course of the year, say, we're falling behind in this area. And I'll give you a perfect example. I mean, you know, we've got Jaime's name on here. Well, Jaime being gone, you know, is going to slow us down, you know, for a period of time. We have to have these ways to convert, to talk with the council on the staffing support side, along with, you know, again, how in-depth you want to get on a particular issue, and you just may say at some point, again, the comp plan is so important, we want to put 50% of our time on that, and again, not worry about some of these other issues.
So, I said I was going to make, oh, I'm sorry, Eric.
So, so, this is a great list. Maybe this is a really, a really minor issue, but, so, this is the same as the list that you guys showed us before the retreat, right?
Yeah, we added a few, added some columns, and again, as I indicated, there's six or seven projects not on here.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is that, you know, when we did the off-site, there were some things, I mean, we sort of did this artificial slice, we said, what are the council priorities, right? And there were some things that were proposed for council priorities that we said, you know, obviously, it's going to be important, we're going to do it, but it doesn't show up on the list. And like, fiber to the premises was one of them, you know? So, fiber to the premises in here, and it's allocated to the built environment bucket. And, you know, that sort of seems like not right. And there's other things that there's, of all these things, there's no healthy cities stuff in here, right? And so, I just sort of, it seems like, I mean, I think it's the right list, but the allocation of stuff into the priority category seems like, like, maybe that's not the right way to do it, you know? Because there's stuff that we're going to do, that's going to be priorities, that doesn't fit into these buckets, into one of these four buckets, and yet, doesn't mean we're not going to do it, so maybe we shouldn't try to force it in.
So, so, again, I think we, you should give us commentary on that. I think it's multiple things, I think it's something else. All of these are judgment decisions. I think also that you should add things that you think need to be here, understanding that all of this is sticking with my iceberg metaphor. All of these things are sort of being looked at as mostly above the water line issue. The water line, we still have 80% of what we're doing is a city below the water line, and the idea there is, unless we fail and screw up at one of those things, and the chunk falls off from the bottom and floats up to the top, then it becomes a priority, but if we're taking care of it. But you may have things that are just, these are only organized, as you said, around the priorities. You may say there are some other things that are of equal importance, as far as accomplishments for this year, that we've got to get on this list.
So, I said I was going to ask if council was willing, since we don't have a finance committee meeting at 7:00, if we could go to just 7:30? Because I think we can, it's a quarter till 7:00, and I think we can actually tick off quite a few things here, if we can hang out for just a few more minutes.
Do you have a question?
No, no, so, I don't see anyone saying that they...
A lack of rebellion.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be leaving at 7:30.
Silence is consent. Okay, yes.
Just one thing, it's from what I said. It's such a concern of mine, and I actually was using this word cautiously, but I was really thrilled that we chose it as one of the areas we're going to concentrate on. But I would suggest that until you and I have been in DC in a little less than a month, we're going to hear a whole lot about this. There will be a real concentration on that, there is a whole body of knowledge and information on healthy cities and healthy communities. And it would be great to bring that back and talk then about how it's seen, at least at the national level. It may not be what we choose to adopt, but I think it will give us a good, you know, at least a good point from which to reference whatever else we may do during the year.
Concur with that. So, what I'd like to do is, hang on just a second, what I would like to do is go through the list, the reason I wanted to wait until the end is because you all have heard how many things might be referred to Policy and Services. That's kind of why I wanted to go through all of these, so we're not overloading Policy and Services, and it takes, you know, five months to get all these things through there. So, I think what I'm looking for are motions or thoughts about, hopefully motions, so we can move through these and dispatch them fairly quickly, of what you all think should be sent to Policy and Services, what should come back to a committee of the whole, because some of these things, as I think Mark said as well, if we're going to have full discussion of these at the council anyway, then why is it going to Policy and Services? So, that's what I would like, is to go through these things, and hopefully, somebody will propose motions for the variety of things, so we can move through them quickly.
You mean these things, not Jim's list?
Correct, correct. No, we won't, we won't be vetting all of the work plan in the next few minutes, so...
Well, the problem with Jim's list is it's new information, so we can't make a decision on it.
Yes, of course. So, Corey?
Yeah, before we move off of the work plan, I just want to say, thank you very much for bringing this back, and just kind of picking up on what Eric was saying, and I think that, and also what Liz was saying, I understand why this doesn't have a lot of healthy cities stuff on there. And it maybe goes back to the point earlier about maybe we need to find some kind of ad hoc committee structure to really get our healthy cities priorities up and running, because this is, you know, this is stuff that we've already sent to you in the past. Healthy cities wasn't a priority for us in the past, so we weren't sending you a lot of stuff related to it. There are a couple of things here that you could probably move into the healthy cities category. I understand that the council priority column on the left was basically an artificial overlay on something you'd already produced, so I appreciate the work you did with that, but I think this is definitely useful. And, yeah, if there's, if the format that we decide to send it back to you in has, you know, whether we just scribble on this, or do it online, or whatever, if it has an opportunity to add our feedback about how important they are, how much time we think we're going to spend on it, versus, you know, can we just delegate this to you, that would be really useful. Yeah, thanks. This is a good next step in this work plan.
So, I'm looking for motions on how to proceed dispatch and affect outcomes, and advice for the, to the whole council. Tom?
Just process-wise, can we do it in those four buckets?
Yes, yes, please.
And then, we already had three items in the first bucket, again, just to remind people. So, are you...
So, and if you would, and if you would reiterate those as we go through, because that way, we'll have a complete record, if you don't mind, Tom? Does that make sense? Probably helps the city clerk and us both going forward.
Yeah, but we're not going to revote on them, right?
We're not going to revote on them, but if you can re-reference the ones that have already been submitted, and we might want to change if, you know, it looks like you might be making a motion, Tom, so...
Yeah. So, I was not going to make a motion, but I did not hear much, if we're doing it by category, if we're in protocols and procedures...
I am looking for motions.
Okay.
Because for us to dispatch. Category to time, please, yes.
So, under protocols and procedures, I guess, city clerk, it's already in the minutes, again, page 22 and 23, there were three motions passed in that category, and I don't have any others in that category.
And if you want to just, just reference what they are?
Telephone guidelines for closed session, procedures for consent calendar items, and clarification of the role of the manager, staff, mayor, vice mayor, and setting of agendas.
These are all to be referred, correct?
Yeah. Actually...
We're not making a decision, you're making a referral.
Those were already voted to be referred to Policy and Services, and I'm just trying to have a complete record here of referral, as opposed to having it piecemeal.
I think there's actually an error in the list that the city manager, sorry, Jim, but I think there was one that was off there. What I'm looking at in, on pages 22 and 23 are referring to, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it was the telephone participation guidelines for closed sessions or open sessions. So, the first one is really telephone participation for either closed or open sessions, and then the second one being consent calendar, and the third one referring to clarifying roles of those who are involved in setting the agendas.
I see, well, they were already there, so unless somebody wants to move to not send those, we don't need a motion for it. Any other comments on procedures and protocols of what gets sent? We have a bulk of items there. So, I don't see, I don't see any motions, so I'm going to move that we refer everything that's been recommended for procedures and protocols to Policy and Services with the following caveat, and that is, at Policy and Services, evaluation and recommendation will be made for those things that should come back to the committees of a whole, or the full council for discussion, because of the duplicative effort that might be indicated. Does that make sense? I'd need a second.
Just...
Yes, okay. So, lacking another motion, everything that has been submitted from council members and consideration from members of the public who've sent in things, for, under procedures and protocols, that those be referred to Policy and Services Committee with the caveat that those things that will generate full council discussion not be concluded at Policy and Services, but rather, it will be referred to Committee of the Whole or Full Council for Discussion, rather than, it's a long motion, I know, but what I don't want to do is...
So, I don't know that last part, who makes that decision on what should go to the committee as a whole? I'm not clear on that.
Well, it's a judgment call. It's a judgment call. It's, if, if there's going to be a lot of, you can tell when something goes through a committee, this has like really been very difficult to decide, or this looks like something very difficult to decide. It happens at committees often, where something is either put on consent or not because of the nature of the item. So, committees, committees have the ability to determine that.
The committees usually determine it if there's one opposing vote, is that...
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about here, though. This is a more, it's a little bit more subjective than that.
Eric, just a clarification, because I've got procedures and protocols on both on 22 and 23, and also in the media management one that looks like that. So, are you looking at the draft minutes as you make the motion?
No, I am looking at the submissions.
Are you looking at this that looks like this?
Yes, I am. That plus the submissions that were made prior to this meeting.
So, could, if I just might clarify, where the three items that you were talking about, what is listed under procedures and protocols on the summary from the council meeting? And then, there is a list from Councilmember Schmidt and from the mayor submitted, in addition, this item B and item A in your packet. All of those would be being referred to Policy and Services Committee initially, is our understanding. That begs the question as to whether or not there are other procedure and protocol issues in those other areas, but that's, that's what we would be bringing to PNS. in those other areas, but that's what we would be bringing to PNS.
Initially, yes. Pat?
Well, under this B, which is different from this B, the, where we, this one's meeting management, what? No, yours is called procedures and protocols, those two. And we got a second one for the same date that's also B, that is, six pages, whereas-
Flash this B, does that look familiar? Is that the B we're looking at?
So that's the one from Greg and Karen, and that's one B. This one is also at your place, and this was a carryover from the retreat, and that's also B. So what I was going to say was, what's under meeting management, under the one from the retreat, appears to include things that are potentially procedures and protocols. So we can still tackle them when we do it under tonight's agenda item on meeting management, but when I look at them, some of those are for consideration whether they should be in a procedure or protocol.
And that may well be. You know, there's nothing that precludes council members from making a motion to say we want to send everything that's been submitted under procedures and protocols to Policy and Services, except for blah item, which we think will take a lot of discussion. No, Eric, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I want to speak to the motion for a second, or ask a question on the motion, which is, I sort of, yeah, so far, but, I mean, I sort of had the same question Pat did, right, which was, you know, what does that mean? And are you asking the following, that we take the, the whole list goes to Policy and Services, and there's basically three answers to each one, reject, accept, or send back to the full council for discussion? I mean, is that, is that what you meant?
Basically, yes. Make a recommendation, whether that's accept or reject, or modify.
Right.
And the other is, for those things, that committees often do, whether, when deciding whether something should go on consent or not, we do have the rule that Greg mentioned about having one dissenting vote causes something to be on action. However, there are those things that even are unanimous at committee, that are recommended to be put on the agenda as an action item because of their controversial nature or complexity.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is that rather than hash it out twice, that the recommendation in the motion, which is hard to state, that those items that are so hard to hash out, either get an initial vetting, or just say, let's just take this to a committee of the whole to get it hashed out.
But the quick answer is, each one gets one of those three?
Yes.
Okay. Then I understand it.
I think there's a fourth scenario, which Karen may have alluded to just now, which is, the committee would still do some vetting, and then recommend that the full council have a discussion. So we'd try to help that discussion, but not conclude it.
Yes, do any kind of preliminary work that might assist, but not-
I hope that's what we're talking about, is really a vetting process.
Yes, yes. Cory.
And the other part of your motion about what gets referred, since we already did refer three items to Policy and Services at our previous meeting at Mitchell Park, it sounds like your motion also was adding those things that have been submitted that are along these lines, but that have been submitted since that meeting of the whole at Mitchell Park. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's why I asked Tom to, and which city manager alluded to too. So I would like a complete record. So those three things that were referred at the retreat are included in tonight's recommendation too. So does somebody else want to try a hack at a motion that I tried? It's difficult language, or I'll try it again.
Karen, did you also mean, you said something about members of the community, so did you also mean, like, email from citizens?
Yes, of course. There, it's a public process.
Well, let me seek clarification on that. Are you saying that anything that we receive from the community, we're directing Policy and Services to take up as a, as an item, without any screening as to whether we think that's appropriate?
Like any communication from the public, whether it's an oral communication or any submission from the public, the council is free to consider or not to consider.
Free to consider and not consider is different from a direction from the council to consider. And what I understand we're doing right now is directions to consider, and that's different from whether we are also, and separately said, that we're given the latitude to consider some of these other items. But those are two different directions from the council. One is, we are to consider all things, including every comment from the public, versus, we are to consider all the things that have been referred by the council, and we may consider things that came to us from the public.
I'm fine with that. It may be a matter of semantics, but I just want to make sure that we're not ignoring those submissions that are made by the public, because we have obligation to do that.
Yeah, semantics get a bad rap. It's actually, talking about meaning is what semantics are.
Greg?
On the motion, if I could ask for one adjustment to it, if you use your later language, it's in the caveat to say, if there is one dissenting vote, or the group thinks it is appropriate to have a full council discussion.
May I just offer a comment that are, your current policies or protocols or procedures, whichever they are, includes that rule?
Yes.
So that the committees do always have that ability, even with a unanimous vote, to say that they would choose the item to go on to action. I think Mayor Holman was suggesting something slightly different, which is even before fully vetting the issue, the committee might sort of say, as we're getting into this one, we think it's just better handled by the full council in the first instance.
Do you want to vote on this motion? You got it.
Okay, with that explanation, I'm, I'll just second.
Well, I should probably restate it, so, Jim, I'm sorry.
I'll let you restate it, please.
Okay, now if I can remember where it was. Okay, so the three items that were voted on at the retreat, having to do with procedures and protocols, those being telephone guidelines, consent calendar issues, and mayor, city manager clarification regarding agenda setting, those plus, those submissions made at the retreat prior to this meeting by council members, that those would be considered by Policy, those would be referred to Policy and Services. Review of, if that language is working for everybody, review of any other public submissions would also be referred to Policy and Services, with the caveat that, is this too much, Beth? With the caveat that those things that are determinate would be handled as such by Policy and Services. Those things that become clear, that would require, or would generate full council discussion, should be referred to Committee of the Whole, or the full council for deliberation and determination.
And I-
Well, I need a second.
Can I just, I think we missed the, I hate to be so stickler here, the materials that have come in, came in after the materials from the council retreat.
I did say submissions made prior to, yeah.
Submissions prior to.
Made by council members prior to today's meeting.
And also the, all of these things from the meeting, it's-
Yes, yes, yes. So, do I have a second? Okay, Pat, do you want to speak to your second?
One of the items that I had down for the retreat was completion of core values adoption, and it was under staff council relations. It's really a standalone. I can't find where to put it.
And you know what? That was referred to Policy and Services at the retreat.
Okay, good. So then we'll just add that for clerk's record to consolidate everything. Excellent.
It is a complex motion, but is it clear? Mark?
Ah, yeah, it's clear to me. I mean, we're essentially sending everything to Policy and Services, and there's direction for what PNS should do. I haven't had a chance to review all the stuff that was just at places, at least not thoroughly today. I have one, and I'm being nitpicky about this, but I'm going to continue to be nitpicky about this, because there's a misunderstanding in the community about our code. And on page two of one of the Bs, the one, the one that was submitted, I think today, from you, Madam Mayor, two, three, four, on the second page, the second bullet point down, it says increased office occupancy density beyond what is considered in the code of four per thousand. And my understanding is, there is nothing in the code about office density. It is in the code that says that there should be four parking spots per thousand square feet of office space, but that's not what this is saying here. This is saying, or at least that's not my interpretation of what this is saying here. And that gets misrepresented a lot by members of the public, and I think it's important that we start to get, you know, real clarity about what's in the code, which is four parking spots per thousand square feet of office space, not four people.
So just a quick comment about that, and thank you for bringing it up. My understanding has been that the four parking places per thousand square feet was based on what the presumed office density occupancy was. But the other thing, and maybe more important thing, maybe more important thing, is that that's just a list of examples of things that staff would be to bring, would be bringing to council as they saw emerging issues.
Okay, okay. And I didn't see, I didn't even see the examples included bit.
Yeah, they're just examples, potential examples.
Because I would say that, I mean, that, you know, if that's, well, it's a longer conversation, but that's assuming that every employee drives their own single occupancy vehicle, which they don't.
Remember, the code is, in this regard, fairly old.
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that, but let's not assume that every employee drives a single occupancy vehicle.
Right. And understand, too, that these are examples, you know, the Policy and Services Committee can't change code.
Yeah. I just, I mean, it worries me that I'm sending, approving, I understand, she made that point. It, you know, I just, this is something we hear time and time again from members of the public, and I think it's important that people understand that it's parking spaces per thousand square feet, not people.
Okay.
Cory had something, and I do too.
I was just going to add a little bit more clarification to that. I mean, here what we're essentially talking about, maybe, anyone correct me if I'm wrong, what we're talking about with this item four here on this, this item B, is things that are under the water, to use the iceberg analogy, these are things that are under the water that might rise to the surface, and whether Policy and Services should recommend changes in our policies, to ask staff to keep an eye on those things that might rise above the surface, so that we get a heads up before they come to the surface. Is that essentially what we're talking about here?
Well stated. Pat?
Because at least you know. Yeah, one, and I don't think we took any action on it earlier, was when I was raising the question of whether Policy and Services Committee should look into having greater clarity as to what we mean by a policy and what we mean by a protocol.
You are on the, well, actually, you're the chair of Policy and Services, so I think you could bring that up at.
So we are going to have an overall review of policies and procedures, as we do annually, but I want to get a sense of whether colleagues would like us to look at that.
Clarification is good.
Okay. Second thing, and I, this came up at the council meeting, when we set priorities, is in a few succinct words, the intent of a priority can't really be fully captured. But we need to have priorities be succinct. And so it's a question of whether we should attempt one or two sentence narratives that would be proposed to the council on what we're about in this priority. For instance, healthy cities.
Are you suggesting that, so we're under procedures and protocols, is this something that I'm not capturing that was under priorities?
It would be something that would, it was a follow-up from our priority setting. And colleagues may not want to refer this, but do we just have the, you know, sometimes three words to capture a priority, or do we have a very succinct narrative of a sentence or two that says, here's what we mean by this, infrastructure, we're talking about now implementation over the next two years, or whatever. On healthy cities, eventually I suspect that that will become a core value, but to the extent it's a priority now, as I've thought about this more, it's a priority to create a program around it. And so that's what we'd be doing as a priority. So there, you know, we had discussions about, at the retreat, about what we meant in just these few words that we tried to capture, but it may be helpful to the community, because often people look at it and go, what the heck do they mean by that? And if we have a sentence or two, we said, this is what we mean.
So can I suggest this? Let us take up the motion that's on the floor now and vote on that. We'll return to your thoughts, Pat.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me, please, before we go ahead with this, and Pat, I want to ask you this. Oh, wait till Pat's done reading. This looks like an enormous amount for any one committee to undertake. Is this something, and I realize you're not going to say, of course, I'm uncomfortable with it, but do you feel that this is the kind of thing, that as a committee, you're going to be meeting twice a month, without question, that is really swallowable by June or so?
Well, I would anticipate that there would be months where we'd meet twice. I'm not assuming that it's without question, and I'm not assuming that all these things will be flushed out by June, but hopefully many of them.
I think it's really, are you comfortable with this? Because this is a, this is a, as we mentioned earlier, Policy and Services has apparently grown through the years. This now being my third year, I don't know what happened year four before, but this is a big committee assignment.
So as Pat mentioned earlier, the, one of the responsibilities of Policy and Services, well, of the council, and it has always traditionally gone to Policy and Services, is that they review the procedures and protocols. So in that regard, it's appropriate. I agree with you that it's a large load, and that's why I added the part that, like, those things are going to be re-vetted, that they just not be concluded by the Policy and Services Committee. Jim, you had something to add?
Well, no, if I, I would just amplify that. I was going to joke about this when it passed, and I said, we're declaring March Public, I mean, Policy and Services Month, but I do think that there is some front-end loading that will take place here. There'll be a winnowing process that you've delegated to the committee, that I would think fairly early on, you'd be thinking about, what things would we really say we want to focus on, and what things are we going to put in a parking lot, and maybe they just go back to the council. And so, I mean, anything that's going to go back to the council is back on the council's plate, but it's off the committee's plate. And I understand the motion to be granting discretion to the committee, really to make those determinations.
Yes, and one last comment I'd make here, and we have about, we have about 17 minutes to conclude here, so we need to be moving quickly. Well, I'm going to lose people at 7:30, so that's why. But when you're looking at this list, too, a lot of these things are duplicates of each other, or just one thing being refinement of another thing. So it's not as big as it looks like, it's not to diminish, so can we vote on the motion?
There's one more big question, though. Are you including the minute, the meeting management? Because I'm not hearing that.
No, 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 uh-uh. This is just A. That's why we have to move along.
Go for it.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, that passes unanimously. I did not repeat the motion. Beth, I hope you've captured it. Thank you. So meeting management, looking for a motion on how best to, how best to tackle that. Are these things that, you know, again, we can have, if Beth can find another date, we can have another Committee of the Whole meeting, where we can dispatch some of these things. Alternate B to refer to Policy and Services, which we've just heard they have a load, so looking for a motion, please. Not a lot of discussion, but motions would be preferred. Cory.
I'd move we refer the meeting management proposals to Policy and Services for consideration to bring back to council.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Nope.
Pat?
Yeah, just that some of these things, I think, are already in the discretion of- Yeah, just that, some of these things, I think, are already in the discretion of the mayor or otherwise, and I haven't gone back and tracked it against our current policies and procedures. But is the intent that if it's already in the discretion there is to give a little more clarity that that discretion exists, or if it's already there, leave it alone? I mean...
Again, from my perspective, I think clarity is good, so if, from the committee, reports back, or as a part of the minutes, and when there would be a report back at the council, if you wanted to restate that, so no one feels left out, or like their position or suggestion was ignored, I think that would be quite appropriate to reiterate that.
Yeah, I can see us putting things in, whereas the mayor may, and it becomes discretionary, just a little more of a reminder of the discretion that exists.
Greg?
Yeah, let me try, alternate motion, substitute motion. It's hard to deal with the issue of meeting management without the mayor participating in it, since the mayor is the Chair of the council. So, I would suggest a motion that says the mayor will make a proposal, and she can't make it to the Policy and Services Committee, it would have to be to the committee of the whole, and committee of the whole can deal with the mayor's proposal.
Greg, I think I would second that, if I can make sure that I'm hearing what you said way down here at the other end. You're suggesting that Mayor Holman take this and essentially distill it to its essence and bring it to the Policy and Services?
To the committee of the whole.
To the committee of the whole.
Because she can't bring it to a four-member committee.
Okay, to the committee of the whole. Okay, good. Then I've heard you clearly, and I've seconded it.
Okay, and Corey?
So, I'm not going to support this, this motion that council member, or the Vice Mayor Schmidt has proposed, because among those recommendations, in the prior motion that we'll get back to after we defeat this one, the suggestions from the mayor are already included in those things that will go to Policy and Services, and then we'll come back to the committee of the whole, or rather, the council member, or the council as a whole.
The one thing I would say to that, just briefly, is, but I didn't comment on anybody else's suggestions. So, I think Eric, and then Pat.
If I could just sort of make a comment here, what I think I've heard over the last 10 minutes is, you know, there was some discussion about screening these things, okay? And basically, that seems to me like kind of what we're talking about here, okay? Which is, it's going to go to the policy, the previous is going to go to the Policy and Services Committee, and they're going to throw away the no-brainers right away, approve a couple, and then the ones that aren't sort of real obvious are likely to come back to the council as a committee as a whole, okay? And so, the difference between Councilmember Wolbach's motion and Councilmember Schmidt's motion is, who's going to do the screening? Is it going to be the Policy and Services Committee, or is it going to be the mayor? Right? And, I don't know, it seems to me like either one of those can work, right? So, let's make a decision and move on.
Pat?
Well, what I think Smith guided about the substitute motion is, there's an implicit premise that whatever these meeting management issues are about this year and this mayor, and that's not what they are. They're about ongoing best judgment of the council for policies and procedures, for future meeting management and future mayors. And so, I think we don't want to fall into a trap of thinking that it's about a given year and a given mayor. We do have a number of these that already came from Councilmember Holman, so I think these are about council policies, not mayor policies. Council policies for how the mayor will run meetings, but not about a given mayor.
So, seeing no other hands, we'll vote on the substitute motion for the mayor to make recommendation and present to committee of the whole. All those in favor?
I'm still supporting it.
It looks like that fails on a six-two vote, with Councilmembers Niss and Schmidt voting in favor. So, we return to the main motion, which is to refer the meeting management suggestions or considerations to Policy and Services. Signal hands, further. Vote in favor of that motion, or oppose?
Aye.
And...
It's fine, it's the only game in town.
Unanimous vote.
All your chips are on the table, right, Liz? So, that passes unanimously.
We made a good try.
An eight-o vote, with Councilmember Scharf absent, which I should have been saying earlier. Okay, then going to committees.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, Tom?
The motion is the Regional Housing Mandate Committee be replaced with a Council Comp Plan Update Committee, a new ad hoc Healthy City Committee be formed, and the School Liaison Committee explore with the school district, taking a more substantial role. If anybody wants to suggest a word smithing there at the end.
I'll second it. Conditional second? Good.
Tom, do you want to, have you spoken to your motion earlier in comments?
I think I have.
Or did you just repeat it again? Corey?
I would propose a friendly amendment, I do second it, to just start with, that we shall refer to Policy and Services Committee consideration of proposals to, and then everything Tom said. Yeah, that's acceptable.
So, what are you suggesting, go through Policy and Services before I can actually...
Become reality.
I'd like to offer, Pat?
This is not because of the workload of the PNS Committee, but I actually think that this is a decision that the committee as a whole should make. Yeah, I don't think this should be referred to PNS. And do we have another committee as a whole meeting?
That's what I was saying earlier, is like, Beth tried to get another meeting, and we could not find...
But it's the intent to have...
It's the intention to have another one, or two, or three.
Well, how about...
But we need to get dates.
How about if I offer this amendment, that it be rolled over to the next committee as a whole for additional discussion on this...
I support you on that, Pat.
That sounds like a non-motion, that we need to, it would just fail.
This is a hard...
Well, no, I'm sorry, just, Liz, it would actually be deliberately agendized, as opposed to it failed and dropped off the agenda.
Okay. Could this just...
Corey?
Could this just be brought to a regular council meeting, rather than scheduling another committee as a whole?
I think we need more committees of the whole, because I can tell you, our agendas at the council meetings are full and beyond full.
And I would add that it's the sort of thing that would be good to have just dialogue informally about, whereas on, at a regular council meeting, we state our positions, and, you know, it's not give and take that occurs in this informality. We got one cut, and, yeah.
So, can we have the current motion? That we move that this be discussed at a second meeting of the whole?
The, yes, as soon as can be scheduled, but, so, the three considerations, and I need to know if anybody else has anything to add, the three considerations that were put forward were the formation of a comp plan committee, an ad hoc Healthy Cities Committee, and a city schools committee role clarification or definition.
Let me ask whether... Well, maybe I can throw something in and speed things up here. It seems that committee as a whole is where we should be having this core values discussion, not in the Policy and Services Committee. Everybody should be wading in on it. And so, I would recommend that we also agendize that for the next committee as a whole. Can we tag that onto this motion?
Let's, I'm afraid let's do it as a separate motion, so...
Okay, all right.
I don't see any other hands on the motion, no additions. Greg?
Yeah, just a question, is we're forming committees for some of the priorities, but the built environment is left off. Is that right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Actually, sorry, I know I'm the second or further motion, but just wanted to clarify, the comp plan committee was ad hoc or standing?
That can be determined at the committee of the whole meeting.
All right, great.
So, all those in favor of the motion, which is to refer to a committee of the whole, the formation of a comp plan committee, ad hoc Healthy Cities Committee, and a city schools role? All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes on an eight-o vote, Councilmember Scharf absent. Pat, did you want to cause to be readdressed, the core values discussion?
Yeah.
I would move that the discussion of core values be moved to the next committee of the whole meeting.
I'll second.
No further comment.
I see no hands. It should be clear that this is a different direction than what was directed at the retreat. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes on an eight-o vote, Councilmember Scharf absent.
I have another motion?
Yes.
Quickly. So, reading, reading from the back of the packet, council priorities to be detailed in short narratives with directions to our key advisory commissions and boards, and how we want projects evaluated, and criteria we'd like them to use in their reports back to us. Council to approve and send specific directions to ARB, PTC, HRB, and Parks and Rec. So, it's exactly what's on here, except I changed it to short narratives to kind of incorporate what Commissioner Burt was saying.
I use Speaker, Commissioner Burt.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Burt.
So, would you repeat the first, would you repeat it, please, Tom? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's exactly what's here.
You're looking at number two.
Council priorities to be detailed in short narratives, and then the rest of it as-is.
And then, which words did you remove?
Should be outlined.
Are those two separate lines?
No, I'm replacing, council priorities should be outlined, with council priorities to be detailed in short narratives, and picking up with directions.
Could you get a second?
Eric seconds. So, Tom, do you want to speak to it at all? Eric, as seconder? Mark?
I'm sorry, I have no idea what we're doing here. Are we saying that, I mean, what's the process for this? How are we going to accomplish this goal? Is this something that's getting referred to PNS? Is this something that we're going to have a whole council conversation on? There's a lot of, I mean, I'm not comfortable supporting it as-is.
Greg?
And I can't either, and I'll go into detail if you want.
Greg?
Should we refer, first, an ambiguity?
Okay, Tom?
I'm open to suggestions, but I would change it to refer to Policy and Services at the beginning.
Okay. Greg, you had your hand up?
I guess you explain.
I'll support it, and I'll really hope that we find a way to have this not be controversial at Policy and Services, or else we're going to end up having a whole long conversation about it at council, and then ending up not being able to agree on, I love the idea, I just don't know how we're going to do it, but hopefully, it'll work out.
Karen?
Liz?
I'm not going to support this. I think we're getting extremely directive with our appointed commissions, and perhaps it'll work out, but it's getting pretty prescriptive.
I don't see any other light, Pat and Corey?
I have a couple of amendments that may address some of the concerns of colleagues. First, when this was written, in the second line, it says, referring to the boards and commissions on how we want projects evaluated, and really, it's now initiatives, or something to that effect. Okay, so that's, Tom accepted that?
Yes.
Eric?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Second, it says send specific directions to ARB, and this maybe addresses Liz's concern, which is, it's really guidance, huh? Is that acceptable? Instead of specific, this is to the maker of the motion. It may not be acceptable to you.
Right.
Yeah, I think that was the intent.
Okay. And then, I noticed HRC, Human Relations Commission, isn't listed here, and otherwise, do we have all of our boards and commissions? No, we have public art, so why don't we just say appropriate boards and commissions?
That's acceptable as well.
Okay.
Yeah, all is acceptable to me, too. The comment I was going to make on this is, you know, I mean, the, these commissions are council commissions, I mean, they're created, appointed by us, and, you know, in order to help us get work done, and I think, you know, we want to, if we're going to have these things, we want to be able to get useful work out of them that's going to help us do stuff, right? So, one of them, you know, reexamination of that process was one of the mayoral priorities, right? Another one, last week, you know, has talked about, you know, there was some dialogue of, well, zoning laws aren't real laws, right? And somebody else said, well, developers will be guided by common sense, so we don't have to direct them, right? You know, I think, I think one of our priorities has been, you know, we need to get value from these commissions and guidance, and here it is, the end of February, and we haven't done anything yet, so let's get on with it. So, I support the motion.
Corey?
I just wanted clarification about the amended motion. Towards the end, the words specific directions have been changed to guidance, is that correct?
Yes.
And at the beginning, the word directions, is that also changed to guidance, or does that remain directions?
Probably shouldn't.
Or is this redundant, where we could leave out the whole last sentence?
Well, we don't have to words smith it, so, yeah, to not be confusing.
Let's replace guidance, let's replace guidance at both places. Okay. So, all of those, that is a primary amendment.
And Eric, are you okay with that, too?
Yep. At 7:30?
Yes, it is. We're almost there, we're almost there. I'll support this, but I got to tell you, I do have some concern about it, because it's not just our priorities, it's also comp plan, and so, I just don't want us to be supplanting. So, if this is going to Policy and Services, no, this is coming to a committee, where's this going? I've forgotten.
Policy and Services.
Policy and Services?
How would you outline that?
Well, no, I'm just saying, it's not outlining comp plan, it's just, this almost looks like it's a standalone, and I don't want it to be a standalone.
Well, why don't you, if you want to bring up something else, let's do it to the next committee as a whole, and just take care of this.
Okay.
It'll get chewed up at Policy and Services anyway, and this begs the whole question, the council's got to get clear on what the direction will be in the first place, and that's another whole discussion.
Okay. So, I'm going to amend the motion, offer an amendment to the motion, to refer this to the committee of the whole?
Are you putting it on hold?
No.
No, just referring to the committee of the whole, as opposed to PNS.
For the next time.
Yes.
We'll move it on to the next time, we're, oh.
Or whenever it's the next time.
You can decide what the agenda is, but it's going to be big.
Tom, do you accept that?
I understood the city manager saying, why not send it to Policy and Services, where it'll get chewed up and come back to council first? I mean, it seems like a big thing. We could work on the narratives.
Can I offer a suggestion that we split it between that the narratives be referred to Policy and Services, and the balance of the motion be referred to the committee as a whole?
Okay. Is that acceptable, Tom?
Yes.
Eric?
The narratives?
Yeah, so that Policy and Services would start working on the one or two sentences describing what we mean by each, in each priority, and then, as committee as a whole, we're going to have this additional discussion on what we do with it, including whether there's some part of the comp plan guidance that gets folded in, that Karen was talking about.
Okay.
And we get out of here.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously, Councilmember...
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
No.
Liz voted no.
For the same, for the same reasons that I said previously, I think, I think we're getting very prescriptive, and that troubles me.
Okay, then... Okay, then that passes on a seven-one vote. Councilmember Niss voting no, Councilmember Scharf absent. And our last one is staff relations, policy implications. We're almost done, hang in there, we're almost done.
I move that this be referred to the Committee, additional discussion of this Committee as a whole.
Looking for a second? Jim?
Well, there's a lot of redundancy here, that a lot of these things are included already in other things that you've already directed to go to the Committee, they've been, they're included in some of the subsequent ones that the mayor submitted, the completion of the core values.
Yes, as a preamble to my submission, can we, hang on, guys, it is informal, but we need to be able to hear each other. So, as a preamble to my submission, I did say that, well, some of these are council's procedures and protocols, while others may extend beyond, that would take opportunity to relate these suggestions for PNS discussion. So anything that is not procedures and protocols, the, I would think that the Committee would say, hey, that belongs someplace else. At the, at the B, attachment B, that's the procedures and protocol suggestions, that B, if you read the preamble to that, it identifies that some of those are not necessarily procedures and protocols. Pat, you had a motion, do you want to repeat it or give it another shot?
Yeah, just that all the things under staff council relations, right? And would be referred to the next Committee as a whole discussion.
Second. Accepting completion of core values adoption because...
Correct.
Yes. Oh, that, no, that's already, is coming to Committee of the Whole. It's already, we changed it, yes. Okay, and who seconded that? I'm sorry?
I do.
Okay, Liz, all right. Do you care to...
Let's vote.
Well, can, sorry, guys, so we're saying to the next, I mean, can we say to Ella, Committee of the Whole, as opposed to the next Committee of the Whole, unless you think that we're really going to get all of the things that we sent to the next Committee of the Whole?
Well, I mean, that next meeting can then defer it as well.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, as long as we understand, as long as we're realistic about the fact that we've been everything...
We'll be realistic at the time we adjourn that next meeting.
Just to be clear, though, we're going to respond to this, this thing in the meantime that Jim gave out?
As a separate topic, I think.
Okay.
And we're almost done, guys, we really, really are, and Liz? Okay, so the motion, seeing no other hands, the motion is to refer those submissions referring to staff council relations and policy implications, or implementation, those will be referred to the Committee of the Whole. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that looks like it does pass on an eight-o vote with Councilmember Scharf absent. Then the very last thing is the work table, I'll call it, work plan, that city manager has provided, and looking for suggestions on how we address and dispatch that.
And Karen, could I make a suggestion to you before we break up? This is a lovely room, it's extraordinarily awkward, I cannot see a thing that Beth is writing, so we have no projection, and this long, straight table allows me to see about one person, or at least three noses. And it may not be a problem for anyone else, but it's difficult when we really can't see who is trying to say something or add something to the discussion.
Point noted, yes.
Well, just real quickly on that note, so, there will be projection, there's multiple screens, the media center set this up apparently this way today, because they only have a single camera, because the multiple cameras aren't here, and this is the only way they could get a shot of everybody. I was actually arguing for people to be able to sit around the table before, but that would mean it would be hard to shoot it, so...
Is there reason to not be in the chambers?
Well, I think ability to sit around a table is a better conversation. This, this will not be the ongoing setup when the council's in here, once we've got the camera situation for, it's very temporary.
So, appreciate the comment and agree, and, with both things being stated, so, if I can have your attention for just a couple more minutes here, we have the 2015 council work plans, and looking for motion on how to address and make best use of this?
Could I just restate, if the council could take a look at this, look at, you can make some corrections about how we've categorized these as to the priorities, and you may restate it, or you may say that it's in multiple categories, we're just going to be collecting information. And to, within the priorities, if you would actually sort of rank them in order from one to seven, or whatever there are in each of the four categories, and any other comments that you would like to make. And then the key question is, when would you return them to us? Because we would then collate them, organize, and then be able to report back some pattern information to the council that may engender a subsequent conversation.
But Jim, can you send us an electronic copy with column for priorities and comments, so that we have places that we can just do that, and then send it back electronically?
Sure, we could do that.
Well, let's see, I'm trying to...
And another thing was, I believe, one of the things that came up at the retreat was after each, each topic, that there were going to be some blank lines after each, as opposed to just at the end, for additions?
All right, we'll try to figure that out, but if you guys wouldn't mind taking the paper copy with it, put it under your pillow tonight and sleep with it, and just get those thoughts going.
So I will move that the council get their rankings and priorities back to city manager within two weeks, that would be, what date would that be?
Any a march?
March, March third.
By March third, and the results of that will be compiled by the city manager and forwarded to Committee of the Whole thereafter.
Some wild and woolly meetings.
Could I have a second to that?
I think the...
Okay, any discussion that pertains to the motion?
Which could be done.
Yeah, I got, I got one comment, and it cuts back, it'll be very brief, cuts back to my previous sort of comment about buckets, right, which is, you know, we're asking you to prioritize within a bucket, and this was part of my discomfort about sort of having things lumped into these categories that weren't originally in those categories at the offsite, right? So, built environment started out as being basically a land use category, right, and other stuff got tossed in, and now in there is fiber to the home and stuff like that, so it feels artificial to be going back and saying, well, you know, zoning reform is low priority, because we decided fiber to the home is more important, right? But those things don't really fit in the same bucket, right? So that's, that goes back to sort of my discomfort with the whole bucketing thing. So with that caveat, right, I think, you know, we need to look at that as we prioritize stuff.
Point, point made. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes on an eight-o vote, and this meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two, with the first item taking forty minutes.